Thanks everybody for coming. I have 6:34, so we'll call our meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation and a pledge. "Lord, you've entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make decisions for Simonton, our neighbors, and our future. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our businesses, our suppliers, our constituents, and our workforce. May we always be mindful of their service. We confess that we're nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. We always pray for the safety and support of our first responders and military at home and abroad." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Sorry, I know you're watching. My giant binder almost extra. Apologize for that. Okay, item three is public comments.
Yes, Mayor.
Nate will let us know what order we're going in, but as a reminder, we have a time limit of three minutes. Julie will give you a one-minute warning that you have to wrap it up, a reminder, and then you'll hear a bell that your three minutes is over if you can wrap it up and let slip the next person speak, please. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, we have five requests to speak. First up is Dan McJumpin.
I'll address my comments to the chair. I want to bring your attention, Madam Mayor, to Resolution 2023-1. I know that you're aware of this. It's adopted at 21st of February, 2023. Title of this includes in language the deliberation and public comment during Senate council meetings. Now, for anybody that was here last meeting, for those people that weren't, I was met with a lot of derision. I was met with personal attacks. I was met with violations of this very policy in a manner of nothing but average. In fact, chided me and mocked me while I complained. I have a policy on my website video, because I do video, and we're being videoed tonight, and that's healthy. That's a very healthy thing. But I will not allow slanderous remarks from me or anybody else, for anybody to use my videos for those. I want everybody in the world to know that I have the right to protect myself, the city, and those people that are being injured. And honestly, slander is injury. So I'm not happy. I know I won't get an apology, but your words today of three minutes are very important because last week it was six minutes. Nobody tried to stop. The week prior, another gentleman in the room derived me from his very first comment for seven minutes and was allowed. Nobody should have to put up with that simply because I draw life to things that I don't believe are proper in this town. The specifics that are concerning me are "everyone attending the meeting shall refrain from private conversations." That's out of hand. It's happened a lot. "No extended discussion." Item seven. "Presentations from citizens must be confined to city. Any city-related issue, extended discussions and debates will not be allowed." Three minutes. You've already mentioned that was item. And item seven. Item nine includes "citizens may not participate in discussions of the councils except when recognized." And we are having all this back and forth. And that is slowing you down, it's confusing, and it's unnecessary because I think it's confusing y'all as y'all are trying to make decisions, some of it being intentional, I think. "No member of the council shall interrupt another while speaking unless the speaker chooses to yield." And I've seen a lot of that out of the council, where if somebody has the floor, get on the floor, let them finish their thought, and then talk. But the mayor controls that. And we have conversations that should be reasonable and respectful. The council is committed to conducting its business in a courteous, reasonable, and respectful manner. By the way, I've done everything I could not to speak in public comments. And those times I have, I have not engaged in these kind of behaviors. So the idea that I have my time, what you told me, he gets his time, you had your time. I didn't have time. Nobody gave me time. The video shows that. I didn't ask for time. And that has to stop.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, Kristy Smith.
Kristy Smith, 36630 Canyon. I was at the last budget meeting. All of you seemed okay with a .30 budget, unless you have met outside of this council and discussed it with other people. I can't imagine why y'all would change your mind other than go ahead and move this forward. I hope you pass this tonight so we don't continue dragging this on. I know we were recommended by the professionals a no-new budget of .37, which is concerning to me because our budget as a city is completed by an agreed, educated, experienced city manager. I'm just not understanding why you, as a council, would challenge that, considering we are all in an inflamed inflation market with cost of goods and services increasing daily. You can reduce your spending during the year rather than setting yourself up for failure. With a low budget, you're setting yourself up for failure. And it will happen, and we'll all see it here because the payment's only going to go up. The office supplies are only going to go up. I mean, I run a business, I know. Anyway, so, anyway, one of the big things I've been bringing up for a year is a city enforcement officer. Was there any room in this budget for a city ordinance enforcer? So I'm going to give you an example of why. Currently, we have four residents in Simonton bringing construction debris, which is against the state law, into communities and burning them during a burn man, one being across the street from me, three being in Valley Lodge. I have the addresses. We have pictures. We also have another resident stuffing sewer into his drainage ditches, once a week, once a month. There's nobody to enforce this. And if you called the sheriff, they laugh at you. And they're like, "We're not coming out there." When they were vandalizing our signs, they wouldn't come. They wanted me to give them a report over the phone. I'm like, "I've been waiting out here 45 minutes for you." They won't come. So with no city secretary for me to come in and say, "We have these problems, Erica. Can you take care of these? Can you send letters?" Which she did, which wasn't part of her job. "We were able to get a few things, but without that, we're going to have a city that looks like junk violating state code, and it's only going to get worse." My thoughts. Thank you.
Next up, Angela McKeen.
Oh, I'm going to reframe right now. Can't we talk later, or no? It's right now only. I think I just got a little confused last time.
If you have comments that you would like to make on a specific agenda item, then you can make it at the beginning of that item instead of now, or you can make it now.
Next up, Susan Ledart.
Hello. So mine's a little less contentious. So I don't know if a lot of you are aware that the Allen Creek reservoir, which used to be proposed, probably still proposed. That land has actually been 100% acquired by the Brazos River authority, and they fully intend to develop that into a reservoir. 9,500 acres, which they bought from Reliant. So they were 70%, and now they're 100%. So they intend to move forward with this and hopefully break ground around 2030, which in the grand scheme of things seems like a really long time. But six years in economic development is like that. So the city needs to be, it's literally going to be right on the other side of the river. They're going to dam it. They're going to make a huge lake that's going to be for recreation, but it's also for creating water for the area. So it'll be like a lake trap. It's going to come and go as need arises for it. But in the times when it's going to be a recreational area, the city of Simonton needs to be prepared economically and fiscally for growth coming this way because cabins and things like that, sales revenue, things like that, the businesses can come here and create a lot of value to the city based on that reservoir happening in the next few years. That's it.
And finally, we have Stacy Gotti.
I'm going to speak during the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda. Council, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to remove D and E and discuss those in new business again.
Okay, so we'll just...
A, there's a lot of misspellings. I know, but I don't, I mean, base names spelled wrong, all kinds of stuff that's in there that I just, I don't know. Last time we did it with corrections.
We can do that. We'll want to do them item by item if y'all would like to go through them instead of consent.
And then on the C, on item C, did you, it says that, I apologize, I wasn't able to make it to that, the co-chair and chair are not mayor in those places.
Okay, well, let's just correct. We'll start at item A. Approve the minutes for August 1st, regular council meeting and budget workshop. What corrections do you want to make?
Mine is misspelled.
Okay, will you give Nate the correction?
It's right here, Nate.
Which word is misspelled, or is it Nate? Do you already have it?
It's just, I identified it.
Yeah.
And then the next minute, it spells the same word.
Okay, are there any other changes on A? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended for item A, August 1st, 2023, regular council meeting and budget workshop? Okay, great. Do we have a second? Any further discussion on A? Kelly?
Counsel member is two words, is that correct? It's usually two. So Section 7, under reports. Line item C, City Council, Council Member Cox. Council member is one word.
They're used differently. One's a name.
Okay, any further corrections?
That's what I asked.
Or further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item B. Minutes for the August 8th, 2023, council budget workshop.
Great, it's spelled wrong again.
Okay. Any other corrections? All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for August 8th, council budget workshop as amended?
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C. Approve the minutes for August 7th, 2023, Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Are there any corrections?
It just says that they were designated. It doesn't say who they were. I believe it was Angela and Susan.
Susan and Angela.
Any other corrections or additions? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for August 7th, Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee as amended? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item D. Year-to-date financials. Do we have corrections or specifics we want to discuss on the year-to-date financials?
I would like, because the financials, and I need to say also the monthly bills paid, could you make a request? Because the financial statement as of June 30th and the pay bills as of June 30th, one is printed, was printed July the 11th, and the other one, August the 11th. So they don't, there's a lot of numbers that just aren't on here, so it doesn't give us the information that we need.
So for financial statements, as of August 31st, do we not have this one? Okay, is this report? Do you all not have this one in your, this printed, print date was 8/7, and it says, it says August 31st, but it's actually 8/7.
This one that's in our council book is printed 8/11. And the monthly bills were printed.
8/11 would be three days later than the month I made you, so that should be up today.
That's not the one.
No. These are the ones that I printed out from the supporting document.
This is 8/11. Sorry, I know it's upside down.
That's okay. It's 6:30.
8/11 is when it's printed. And then the other one was printed on the monthly prior.
This is the one that's in the supporting document, which is this.
That's not the one. We're looking for budget versus.
But this is the one that printed for me.
Do you...
Supporting documents.
So this version, this actually was at the budget workshop. Do you have it in your budget book from last time?
Versus your supporting.
Did you make that error?
Because I don't have, the only actuals I have ever received is right here, and it's the printed ones.
The supporting documents, Mayor, that I supplied is the council checknet report.
End of note.
Right. I did print present versus actual. It's the next one.
Right.
But that's the one that we talked about.
That was part of the council meeting, the budget.
Is that not with?
And it was dated 8/7.
This one is the last one you have. Like that.
I don't have that at all.
All right, so to your point, there is a later version of this that provides it's not in the book. So we will have to make a...
Yeah, there's not an actual.
We'll have to make a reconciliation for you or for council about being able to work at, if you want to compare budget versus actual and the bills paid.
Can we just add that?
So the bills paid still could stand on their own for approval tonight on the agenda, the monthly pay bills on item E. And then the year-to-date, we can withdraw that since it's not the right, well, that's actually the financial quarterly report. This isn't on the agenda, so it's not something we'd have to skip over. But I know it's an additional material you would like for budget discussion, right?
Absolutely. Okay, we could maybe have an email too. But I did have a question on the monthly pay bills. And it's probably Julie, a question for Julie.
Okay, so on item E. Right.
There's a category that's, it's called non-departmental, and all the budget numbers on it are like 2107, 2105. But I can't find those on any, anything.
So Texas municipal, it's all insurance and payroll-related?
I can see what it is, but I was just wondering why it didn't have the corresponding budget numbers on it.
So with payroll, you have to batch it monthly, and so you have to create those batches separately. And I'm not understanding what you're asking. So can you repeat your question?
Well, the only one I've got here is the, it's the June, June 1st through the 30th.
Okay.
And the account numbers, we don't have any account numbers at 2105. So when I actually look over the financial statement, I can't find those same numbers at all.
So she went at the column header is the GL account.
And it's all non-departmental.
And it's, she's saying it's not matching in the...
The 2105, the payroll? Those are all Texas workforce, those are all payroll.
She's just saying that she's having a hard time matching the GL number that's on that report to the budget. So the numbers of the buckets we call them in the budget.
I think it would fund you to find out exactly how it's corresponding to the budget.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Just add it to my list.
Good thing about having all of those reports and the budget in the same software is that's easily to, correctable or understandable. If we ask them, yeah, just fine. Now we'll just have to go by the description since we know that's all payroll-related for the moment. Okay, so item D has actually got the copy of the quarterly financial report as opposed to the entire year-to-date, budget versus year-to-date. So look at that attachment, it's got the color. This is the one that we can quarterly and update. You can see what the cedars balances are, development reports, ICS, all the good news. Total over the quarter. Pardon me.
Go ahead, how do you approve this? How do you approve this? This is the same one that you gave us last time. It's April through June.
Right, we see where it's not complete. We just presented it so that you could see the current version since we've been in budget, budget, budget. So this one is completed for the quarter, through June.
Okay. So this is just the complete version versus the...
Right. And so the amount of change is $29,221.61 growth. So our balance to date at the end of June was $3,231,778.61 in our investments.
I'll make a motion to approve that. That's a complete.
Great, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So the monthly pay bills. Are you satisfied that you have the monthly pay bills? Is there any further discussion about that before we have a motion?
I would like to see that printed in its entirety. I know that the dates of when, what's printed and what goes into each month is making it really difficult to, like, I mean, we don't have that page on the actuals, so it would...
This would be a whole nother additional item for you to repeat and write.
Right, right, right. But in the monthly bills being printed, you know, when we discussed it before, there's, so we received previously the one from May, okay? So on this one, the one from June, there's payments regarding payroll that are not in May at all. So it's like there's missing stuff, like the payment.
So this is June.
I understand that. So in May, we don't show a payment to our social media coordinator. So I was trying to make sure she gets paid.
Okay, well, Mayor, so I'll answer that, Mayor. For the social media coordinator, I actually missed that in May, and I went back in and corrected it, but that's when I, I am part-time. So when Jennifer printed it, I had to go back and correct it, and it was ready submitted to the council. So once you pay somebody, you still have to enter it in different software. So it was missed, and I went back and corrected it. So it is there now. I can print you a new report and email it to you if you like.
Okay. That helps. But I mean, again, that's just on a second to kind of back up my question and the fact that what is not in there that, I don't know, I look at it this way. Your monthly bills should relatively stay the same with the exception of, you know, expenditures like the roof and things like that. And this is drastically different from May. So I'll just question, I know FundView's working on it and all that good stuff, and you're part-time, and you're still working on it.
The only correction that we have in June, which I mentioned to the mayor, is I had actually, there is two legal fees dated 6/30 and 6/9. $48.65 actually belongs to July, but I keyed in '06 instead of '07, which I identified, but this was already printed. So I have to go back and do an adjustment for that to move it to July. But other than that, the, they're standard, these are standard charges that are from month to month. I mean, you have ICA and MA, that's different, but other than that, these are all standard that are paid month to month. Now, some of our vendors sit on different times of the month, so they may not get paid in that specific month and carry over to the following month. Would you help duplicate payments?
That's also why we do this a month in a row is to try and allow time for as much of that to be 100% before it gets in. One, a couple of things that are noteworthy in this one and the reason it's so drastically different is that we have $7,660 for the May election that we would not have had in April, I mean, in May, because that gets billed later. The legal service correction for $4,865 that will go to July, so you'll see that one on next month. We had...
That one was actually the May bill. This was...
No, she's saying the one that said, the second one in line that says $4,865 that says June, it belongs in July.
That's actually May's bill.
It's May's bill.
Let me pull it up.
If we need it.
Okay. Either way, we all know it doesn't belong in June, so we will get that, we corrected. Roofing, it was partial payment, that was...
I didn't mean to.
$8,905. And then revenue, what's called revenue plus? Julie, Ryan, revenue management.
Revenue management.
Was $2,000. To be fair, that's about $1,000 a month, but you need, you know, additional work and invoice for $2,000 instead of $1,000, which is not unexpected, but it's different than the prior month.
You are correct, Courtney. It does belong to May. I had wrote down June, but it belongs to May. I did identify that it did not belong in this month.
And actually, the total balance of $48.65 is the May bill, but then the $14.43 is actually the April bill.
Yep, I see that.
Okay.
So it'll be corrected.
Sure, I was not dreaming.
And then June, you can correct it on here at $38.66 for legal fees.
So that'll be a $2,000 reduction.
Correct.
But on the overall expenses for the month, for that one line item, what you've got?
So the $14.43 goes to April.
Right, so she's got $3,800 that actually belongs here that's not on this list. So these two will move to the months where they belong, and then the $3,800 will be here.
$38.66 will be here.
It's about a $2,000 difference.
Yeah.
To this total month's expenses. But that's still about $22,000 different than the month prior, and that's why, because of election, revenue management, and roof.
Can I ask, because I haven't seen T-Mobile on there before, what are the...
Hotspots, emergency operations.
And there's AT&amp;T bills.
Mm-hmm.
Cell phones. $635, $148, $333. Are those all?
Cell phones and devices, cell phones and other devices.
We need...
Seems like a lot of AT&amp;T.
Well, and our, we have quite a few phones as well. And the phone service here.
And just, um, so I'll correct the legal, but legal for July will be 483750, so you'll see that in July.
Any more questions about it? All right, do we have a motion to approve the monthly pay bills?
I would like to see them printed.
How about the monthly pay bills as amended with those three changes to legal?
I made the motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's okay, I just want to give you the opportunity. All right, thank you, you're fine, you're doing fine. Okay, item five, new business. Consider and take action to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. The budget that you have in your brand-new book, and I know that you may have printed it at home because it's been online since Friday, and for you guys, we will get. This is the 30-cent version that we created after we took your feedback from the last budget workshop. A consensus on 30 cents with cuts to expenses to be made in specific categories and items. The cuts that we made, total of 30, I'm so sorry, let me give you the right number. $48,764. We've moved that money, earmarked that money into the roads category, where council asked for it to go when we made cuts. That category already had $5,000 in the working budget, for a total of about $53,000 in roads, in the, in working, without any other movements of money, or potential money. So then this balance has an additional transfer of funds into roads that comes from reserves in order to fund the $200,000 number that you asked for in the budget going forward. So, we can ask for a motion, or if you have discussion about it, now is a great time.
Mayor, we had two speakers reserving their comments, you said at the start of this agenda item, so...
Great, thank you.
Miss Angela King?
Oh, Stacy was going first.
Oh, Stacy, good. Stacy. Gotti, Gotti.
Hi, I'm Stacy Gotti, I work on 12th Avenue Drive. And I just wanted to kind of address overall, between looking at videos and discussions that have gone on, it is my understanding, being a council member for six years, that council meetings are held to conduct the business of the city, not to constantly, and debate is great, but you're here to serve and conduct the business of the city, and your education, and questions, and fine-tooth comb business needs to be done before you get here to the meeting, so you are coming here prepared and ready to make the decision that everybody is needing to hear, so you have, we have the confidence that you are actually doing your jobs correctly. Quite honestly, sitting in the audience and listening to the meetings that I have online, nothing has changed, you have not educated yourselves enough, you have not applied your time before the meetings, and to come here and constantly change, backslide is, is not acceptable, in my opinion. So, I really hope that tonight's meeting ends with an approved budget that does not create a deficit for the city, because that is definitely not your job, to create a deficit, and our fiscal responsibility. It is your job to make sure the city stays fiscally healthy, and I really hope tonight y'all can pass a budget and make it.
So, we all know we live in a small town and there's lots of people that talk, so I'm going to be talking about what I heard, I don't know if it's true, okay? When we talk about what we had as 2023, we had the 49999, that's what we brought in, bringing it down to 30, it was $156,000 to the city, brings it down to 343, 646, it's a huge difference. Rumor is, you guys are considering wanting to bring it down even more. We understand that when you stand up here and you said, like, your last meeting, there were people here saying, "Don't raise our taxes," and that the council didn't listen. Majority of these people here tonight are educated, they've done their homework, they've done their research, and they know that this city cannot survive on that. You guys are looking at it, I feel, as personal, self, you know, I, what you want it to do, not what's best for the city, and you have to look at it differently, because when things are coming, we've talked about that, we're in a comprehensive plan, things are coming, things that we cannot control, and if we are not ready for it, it's going to hurt us a lot. So all I'm asking you to do is consider what's best for the city, not best for what's for you, not best for your friends, or because you told somebody, "Oh, I'm going to stick it to them because I told them I'm going to lower taxes and I'm going to watch me this and that and the other." It's not about that, it's about this city, and that's what I want you guys to really think about when you are considering voting.
Thank you. Okay. Your new book has some things that you've seen before and reference materials if you need it. The transmittal letter, this new, all of the press, we put out a copy for the folks that attend tonight to pick up and think with you, it was not in the documents online, but we'll add it as part of this book, but it's basically summary that I added and a few comments for council. There's a reader's guide and budget files are the star of the show with the 30-cent budget that I just mentioned to you that we went back and created with your, using the direction that you all gave. If there's no discussion, do you want to go to a motion?
There's discussion, hang on, I got a question, actually, more, I don't know if I can do this, can I ask Bert's a question about his meeting with Jennifer? On these two particular ones?
Sure.
Because Jennifer, Jennifer worked these with you, right?
Right, so Jennifer and Bert that I met, they talked about the idea of the 25-cent number. Is there something specific to have for Bert's?
Well, so, maybe more so for you, if you were at the meeting as well, so, even at the 25 and the 27, the payroll, these work, and the payroll is higher than it is on the 30. Can you help me out on that? I don't understand, like, the 25 and the 27 has a payroll, um, total of 316.5. The 30, we've reduced that to 230.
That was one month.
$800. And that's with a higher budget, taking the two, or the 190, whatever, the number, exact number, the 196, to do from the roads, out of the remaining, remaining balance of this year, and then, I guess I'm, I'm not, I mean, if Jennifer put these together and they work with a way higher payroll, then...
So I'm seeing a payroll here of $316,500. Are you on the same thing? This is on the summary page, number one.
So it's the same budget? It's the same, same budget then? So that's what I was kind of saying yesterday, that, like, the numbers weren't adding up, because this one is 25, this one's 27, this one's 30, and...
Right, but payroll didn't change because that expense isn't going to change. It didn't go down, you didn't take money out of payroll, is that what you're...
You're right, no, I'm asking because Jennifer did these, I didn't do any of this, Jennifer did this, y'all, I guess y'all got together and did it or whatnot. If this works, and we're still able to fund all of these particular...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So the 25-cent budget has $0 in it for roads, so it doesn't have the $200 out.
Okay, but we're taking... We're taking that money from the reserves from this year, right? The leftover balance from this year, when you're actually...
You would, so that one doesn't have any money accounted in it for the road?
Okay.
This one does, the 30 cent does.
But it doesn't change the 25 cents, if we were to use 25 cents and put the actual other revenue sources in here for roads, then you would just add it in the, on the backside, in the expense summary, and you would have that at a 25 cent rate. Without creating any sort of deficits and paying all the same bills that were in this one in the whole nine?
I am totally not following what you're asking, say it one more time.
So the only thing that changes from 30 to 25 is the ad valorem collected. Jennifer did this...
Not the only thing, but one of the things.
Well, yes, one of the things, exactly.
Okay.
But the main items that you have that you're wanting to fund in this are also in this, with the exception of the 196 that you're taking from the reserves from this year and pulling it over to do the roadwork. So if we add the roadwork to this, and add that part into the road on the expense side, it still stays at 25 cents. And all the money's are paid.
Well, it doesn't, because that money has to be accounted for in the budget.
Right.
So this would no longer be a 25-cent budget.
No, the ad valorem doesn't change if you add the other revenue from, like you did on this one.
Right, so if you add $200,000 of other revenue to that...
Correct.
And then subtract it from bill spade.
Yeah, because you go back and there, you put it on the roads where it's not in.
So your number would still show, this would now be 920, I mean, about, you know, about a million, this total right here would be 1,029, because you'd add 200,000 to it.
Right, which is...
Is that what you're...
You subtract from inside in order to add to the others.
I understand, I understand this is the, the expense summary, so it's not in the expense summary, if you put it in the, in the, in the revenue side and then you expense it, take it out of the, the expenses, it balances. That's which, exactly what we're doing here.
So, this 30-cent budget has additional budget cuts in it. So we went, after last week's meeting, we went back and cut that number, I was just telling you, the 48,764 dollars in budget line items. For example, Faith brought up about the miscellaneous categories in various departments.
Right.
We took those to zero, and so all of those changes that we made are, have notes out on the right-hand side in the notes, notes section.
Right.
So you could see, in the payroll line item, what items are still in there. Under technology, we're FundView, Granicus, Archive Social, and Easy Task. Page four, you can see the transfer from reserves for the roads, it's a one-time transfer, we put that in there so next year when we're building the budget, whoever was doing it can remember what that was about. That's $146,236 that comes from reserves.
Right. So again, if you put the money in the reserves of this one, you have the road monies in there and the items haven't changed according to what Jennifer put together. That's my question, Jennifer.
The number...
The change comes in additional cuts we made.
Would, would increase, because you'd have to bring in, add, add that additional...
Right, you bring that into your funding and then you take it out in your expenses.
Right, so you would bring in 200,000, right? Whereas in this budget, we're only bringing in $146,000 in the 30, from reserves. So we've been able to reduce the amount of money that would be needed from reserves if we're going to fund it that way, at 30 cents, by making budget cuts, in addition to pulling money over from reserves.
Okay?
Okay, that's not what you're asking?
No, it says, I mean, it's, the numbers are exactly the same, is what I'm getting at, I went through this over and over and over and over again, I think I didn't keep to that industry, but the, I went through it over and over again, the numbers on this one and this one, I didn't get until yesterday, on the 25, they're the same, so that's my question, is, right, the only thing that's going to change, this 25 or 30, is the ad valorem income. We're still taking on this one, obviously we have higher ad valorem, I get that, but you're still taking money for the roads out of reserves.
Right, no matter what you do, at 25 and 30 cents, we are going to have to take money out of reserves in order to fund $200,000 roadwork. You're right about that. It's just a matter of how much money has to come from reserves. If you go at the higher rate of 30 cents, you don't have to pull as much money from reserves.
Right, and that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is Jennifer said this one works, and this one looks the same, what we're doing is taking one line item, per se, you know, they're all different, or some of them are different, and you're putting one here, then you're taking that out of your expenses, then why would we not do this?
Because at 25, well, at 25 cents, you're, what you're doing is, if you stay with 25 cents and you want to do this $200,000 in roadwork, you are making a decision to spend even more money from reserves, basically, the short they hit item.
Again, like I said, if Jennifer said this one would work and this looks exactly the same...
She also, she also came in after she'd already left her employment and helped us do this 30, so it would be correct. And so she went through and helped us make all of the reductions that council asked for, and plug in, identify what the number needs to be if we're going to, if you're going to fund roads from reserves. So I promise you, I have not just run the calculator on that myself, I'm, I could probably do that one, but I'm not the expert by any means, so she was kind enough to help us do that.
Using reserves for anything is a...
Okay, ladies, leave that for me to do, I appreciate, we have no discussion.
Laurie, can I ask a question? Certainly. With the trade from reserves, how do you pay them back?
Yeah, so there's no, has not been discussions of what the strategy, strategy would be to replace that money in reserves if we spend it this year. That would be council to decide what's the strategy for that? How do you put that money back?
And then, $200,000 for roads. What are we going to do with them?
Quarter mile?
Well... I don't have an answer for that, that's a strategy decision.
I'm asking because I, I guess I'm not seeing my point.
That was Jennifer's, that was Jennifer's.
So we have between three and, let's call it two and four, we'll call it $3 million in roadwork outside of the grant that is going to have to be done to the Rose and Bell Lodge. At $200,000 a year, it will take us longer than the repairs or the rebuilds will last. So, you're right, the short-term strategy that council has discussed is taking advantage, if we can get awarded $1.2 million, 1.18 in the grant, if we get awarded that, we'll take advantage of that for this first year and additionally add $200,000 out of the reserves, yes. That, that grant is not...
It's not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed and it has not moved on to the urgent need category, they are still funding grants for communities that can meet the low to moderate income, which we applied for and did not get.
So there is a very strong possibility that we may not be doing any roadwork?
I don't know.
If we don't get the grant, then we only have $200,000. We're going to do a quarter of a mile, I doubt it. I would assume we would let that amass to, so we can actually do something substantial, I'm guessing. And then we still have to pay back the reserves. This is not computing for me.
Thank you. I'm going to have to ask Hilton Reserve comments.
It's not computing for me at all.
The, the tax rate is where? Sorry, one second. I'm not calling you out, I'm trying not to talk over you if you had something about it. Can you help me?
I'm comparing, just looking to compare from the books we got on road repair and the cost of them. And it's, just breaking down, $200,000 gives us just over a mile.
Oh, overlay or we...
And that's with the overlay.
So the $200,000 number came from this, that Jennifer, again, provided, and it's $196,000, which we would also be making money on the remaining funds of the $78,000 not spent on the first project, when that comes just to it. That's where that money is.
Right, that's if we get the grant, and if you don't get the grant, then those pages behind there is what he's looking at, that have the estimates of the quarter mile, eighth of a mile, or three miles that need to be done, and what, whatever costs.
So there's more sense to me to put the money into the roads instead of letting it sit away?
Oh my God, seriously?
I agree with you wholeheartedly, the roads need to be...
So if we have any kind of emergency, we're going to wipe that money out, and then what? We are in the middle of hurricane season, we are in a huge drought right now, we can have fire, we can have flood, we can have all of that, and so you want to spend the, you're, you're willing to spend the cush?
Hasn't it been budgeted for years to do the roads? Hasn't it been budgeted for years to do the roads?
It's been budgeted at about $5,000 a year because, for five or six years, because council made a decision not to do major roadwork until after drainage project was done. So let's say it's been five years, five years at $5,000 is $25,000. Right, if you spend $25,000 for reserves, that could make sense, but that doesn't get you close to the 200. So that's, it's in reserves, it means if we put it there, so we can make money while it's sitting there if it's not spent for that. So you have a good point about that, but it's not enough to offset the game plan to spend $200,000. But again, that's council's decision. You know, to your point of how you rebuild your reserves if you spend it, you know, if you spend $150,000 from it, how long will it take you to replace that? Is your goal to replace that? And what is your future plan for how you can spend more than $200,000 a year strictly from budget if you lower the tax rate this far? I think that's the question. It wasn't my question though, is that what you're?
Question.
Exactly.
What is the reserve we discussed or what do we want to keep? Do you have an idea of what we should have and how do these substantiate them? What should we have?
I don't think council said what they thought that should be, but we talked last time about bare minimum of a million dollars for emergency because we can spend a million dollars in one year on that and.
In one emergency.
In one emergency, back to back, if you have two events in a year like we did in 2016. And a minimum of half a year of your operating, which would be half a million. So 1.5 million is the absolute bare bones minimum without any other factors being considered.
And we've got.
We have three, some of that is dedicated, so there is more money than that. But again, we don't have the ability at 30 cents or 25 cents to, we need to grow that and build it so that we're prepared for, you know, what if you want to spend $600,000 on roads and do a big chunk? Since the rate of repair is going to be so slow that we won't ever get them all done and have them operating before the beginning ones are crumbling again.
And the cost is constantly going up.
Right, and the cost is not getting cheaper. I wrote on it, I'll just have to deal with that. So do you all want to share what you're thinking with Courtney and Kelly or?
Are you looking, what motion are you looking for?
You see what I'm saying?
The council needs to, we come to a consensus on approving the budget and. So is that 30, is it, they're talking about something lower, I don't know if you're proposing that, just talking. Is it higher? Is it 33, is it 39, we're going to. It's up to you, you can make a motion and maybe it could die, which is fine, that's a perfectly acceptable procedure.
I have a question, can we still, can we vote on that? Can we still make changes within this?
Just maybe around the back end a little bit.
Yes.
What you're voting on tonight, Pam, is the budget. So that's the, that's the budget will go out, then you have the budget hearing and then next month you will, the council will vote for, you know, that budget for this year, then you vote for the tax rate. You know, what you're doing right now is really starting to claw in terms of ways you can give the proposed budget out when you have the numbers for the budget here. Then you have the budget hearing then and then after. And you can have as many workshops or meetings, you know, in between then as you want to get to the numbers to have the consensus.
Guess what, we're not going to. The data isn't going to change much, the bills as they come in for this year will, but we won't know how this year is going to end until fast budget time. So we have to work with what we know now, what we have, we have years and years of history, we have, right now we're looking at last year. If something else would be beneficial, we can certainly pull something else to help with a reference, but this isn't really going to change much once you decide this is where I can live with the rate. Here's what my plan is for future, this will roll into my future plan, you're going to be here at least two years, right? So you're thinking more than just this one-year budget, hopefully. When this comes around again next year, are you going to have an appetite to increase it then? I don't know, you don't have to say yes or no now, you're always thinking about those things. If you realize that, all right, now we need to do another $400,000 in roads, how are we going to do that? Are we going to keep spending out of reserves, are we going to make another adjustment on the tax rate? As you well know, that's not popular, but it could be necessary, so just thinking a little bit long-term about that. I have a very rudimentary, I should have just written this in pencil so that you could remember that this is just a rudimentary summary, but Julie's going to bring you this budget versus actual and you'll see, and I think a couple of y'all have brought up or commented about the budget versus actual seems to indicate that we've got $548,000 of unspent money. I just gave you this because I want you to, I'm trying to figure out a visual way for you to realize that if it says there's $548,000, we have all the expenses that will come in between now and the end of the year and through September, but some things we can't touch. So emergency management is $57,496 is in their budget that's unspent. We can't touch a penny of that, we are in active hurricane season, everybody's agreed that we're not spending emergency management money, so that needs to sit right where it is and we need not count on pulling that out because of all the factors that make us a high risk in this area. Consulting for approximately $180,000, that is Ardua, and revenue management. We've already collected all the money for Ardua, so we're going to set that aside so we don't have to, we're not going to dip into next year's budget money, but that means that money's sitting there and it's on the list of unspent money. I'm using that term loosely. So that, you know, again, that's a big chunk, but that's a no-touch, the EDC money. That's $123,000. That money is, we've got lots of rules about how it can be spent, we cannot count on that or take that out of accounts that it sits in, you know, it sits in reserves as well since it's not being used right now, but we're making money with that money, but we can't touch that and use it to apply next year. And in payroll, I made a backup napkin dollar bill, so that's $393,000 with five items listed. I included utilities, about $7,000. So we're just under $400,000 out of these couple items that are big ticket, that you have to remember, this is not going to be leftover money that's available for us to spend because it's already committed to something else. Now I know I'm leaving open, 100, let's call it $150,000. Those are things that are anticipated to come in, there could be a difference and if there is, that money's left over. You're right, that goes to reserves and it could be, you know, it's in the pot, but you could consider that to your point about, well, we didn't spend that $25,000 or 20, whatever the number is in the 2022, 23 budget year, so could we view that as part of our reserves? Yes, you could. So this is a theoretical thing, I just gave you this so you could kind of look at a number instead of me telling you this is the nest should be taken off. So those sorts of things will be in next year's budget, but that addresses the budget versus actual going on right now.
Laurie, any idea what the tax rate would be in order to put $200,000 in roads without us having to touch reserves?
Yes, the number is 22 cents. And I know that makes no sense and I'll tell you why. Because we're a small taxing entity and our tax rate of 44 cents was based on the appraisals, the certified roll from last year. All the math comes from the county, we double-checked it, we approved it, all the good stuff. Well, some of those properties that were still in review board, people that were protesting, came back on the rolls and so we collected more money than the $499,999. So what the county does is take the overage, it's, we were 101% collected, so they take that 1% and use that money in their calculation of what your no new revenue rate is. So the no new revenue rate of 39 cents that they've supplied us is the number that we are obligated to use, but if you actually do the math on that, it's 42 cents. So it's a little bit unusual, it's not the kind of accounting you do on your home budget, but because it's a municipality, that's where that difference comes from. So if we try to do the math and say we want $200,000 more to get us right under 499, we would actually have to go higher than our new, no new revenue rate. Aren't you sorry you asked?
I'm going to hand this to you, this is my rudimentary math I did today, based on the average home, taxable home value being $282,800. And I went from 25 down to 39. There's not a huge difference between each one and I think, I mean Courtney, you can. This would be the monthly rate based on, you know, 25 to 39 cents. I think seeing it like this kind of opens your eyes going, you know, there's really not a huge difference. Why not go for, you know, the 37 or 39 cents? I mean, it's only a difference of, between 30 cents and 39 cents, it's a difference of $21.21 a month. That's it.
For the city.
For a household. For household, for the household.
Right, but then.
We cannot think about Lamar Consolidated or whatever else, we have no control over that.
I'm just saying.
We only have control over the city of Simonton.
I know my particular, well, I was going to talk about that.
But we're talking about the city of Simonton tax, not Fort Ben County. Two different things.
The only thing I can tell you about this, this is awesome, by the way. The only thing I can tell you about this is that because we have already proposed, or at least from what I was told, I think, I think it was told as well, we cannot go above 30 because we've already proposed it.
We actually can.
Yes.
How can you agree on any rate up to the voter approval? Because we're just creating consensus, so if y'all have changed your mind, or if you change your mind, the new rate can be.
I would like to see actual, I think working off of the actual numbers would be much more beneficial for me. Does the last ones that I have, those pink, I think completely flipped around.
So hold on, we've got two different things going on here. One's taxed, one's budget. I'm asking you to consider this so we can actually kind of figure out the budget.
But you're a step ahead, we have to figure out the budget if we're going to approve this budget first and then we'll get a tax. Right, is that what you're saying?
You have to approve them in that order when we get, adopt them in that order when we get to September to ensure the budget. They are a good answer, you can certainly decide directionally, we want to be at.
We're looking at this at 25 cents, 27 cents, 30 cents, so they go hand in hand, right? So if we pick this out here, we can actually deal with this a little bit better.
These were just given to me yesterday because Jennifer did.
I understand, I haven't even seen them.
I was just comparing the three and wondering, you know, why this number didn't change or this number didn't change, but there it's like. If what you need is, and this is an approved proposed budget, if you will get actual numbers, I think that we can move forward with the motion to approve the proposed budget the way it is.
Okay, so you're at a 30 cent number.
I'm at a 30 cent number, I'm good with it, that's what we all.
I think Kelly's asking you, and I don't mean to summarize for someone else, are you asking Courtney and the other council to consider that it's 20-something dollars a month, just say what you said.
The difference between 30 cents and 39 cents, and I'm not by any means saying go with 39 cents, I'm just telling you the difference. It's $21.21 per month, per household.
If your house is only worth $282,800.
All I can do is go by the average, I mean, I can sit here and tell you that mine is way over this, so I'm just, but this is the average. Okay, so that's all I can use. So, but it's still relevant. I mean, I would actually be good.
Thank you.
I'm pointing at a 34 cent.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm pointing at 34 cents, which ultimately comes down to a 22.7 decrease from last year. But it still helps us go a long way to not have to use as much reserves. And I mean, that's my two cents. It scares the bejesus out of me out of using reserves, it really does. Because I don't think that all of the council members are up here thinking of the things that can happen. You're absolutely right, they may not come in and I hope to God they don't, but what if they do? I hope we are prepared for it.
Did y'all hear Kelly's comments about 4 cents? Is that based on 114 or 134? We'll have to get comments to you after the meeting. This council is in discussion. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Yep, it's one week old, it's from last Tuesday. But that would be the most recent budget to actual, this is what I was talking about, if you look at that bottom right-hand corner on the front page, it shows that we have budget remaining of $539,000. 539,048 and 30 cents. So then if you take that $400,000 I just gave you in five big chunks, not considering everything else that, you know, is coming in in the last three months, that's $139,000 potentially to pay all the rest of the other types of bills that are coming our way over the next three months. My point is just to illustrate that we don't have $600,000 or.
We have about $50,000 still remaining, but other things I'm sure.
Right.
These are your big ticket items, I say?
So we have this remaining and we'll have two more months of revenue coming in this one.
Well, don't forget you'll have July almost.
This is really. Most rare.
Yeah, but, I mean Courtney, we're not getting hundreds of thousands in.
That number last week was the same, because actually, when you put the settlement for the ladies, that's exactly the same.
Doesn't that prove my point? We're not getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in each.
So if you look at the revenue, if you look at the revenue total line, the second column from the right.
I'm sorry, second column from the right.
Mm-hmm, on the budget, the revenue total line, we are 84% collected.
Right.
On the projected budget now. There's another 15% to go, 16% to go, assuming it all comes in.
Right. Right.
Okay, question for council. Do you want to take time to do some further consideration of Kelly's proposal and information that you've received? Or? Tell me what you think. This does not have to be final today. I'm not suggesting we continue to be the most meeting city in the world, but this doesn't have to be final today.
I mean, my, my two cents is, we were just given this. So I, I believe we need to be able to examine this before we can go any further. That is my two cents. I will go in there right now and make copies of this for everybody here, but this is.
Kelly, I want to make copies, what do you need? Great, so if you're going to take it. Well, I think you have enough paper yet. Remember that recycling, I told you about contract with the county, we'll take advantage of that after this. All right, I'll clarify down this end. Kelly has said that she, that she would prefer to have time to review this material before moving forward. Do you have a different viewpoint? Or would you like the same? Well, consensus of either accept a motion or pull this item and table it for now lies with you two. I think we've gotten comment from the other three.
What'd you say, Courtney?
I was making a motion that we consider and take action to approve the proposed budget at the 30, the way it was.
30, is that what you said?
We're going ahead and take action on motion tonight. Thank you, ma'am. So, item A, let's do them separately.
Yeah.
So item A is consider and take action to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year '23, '24. Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You abstain?
I abstain.
Item B, consider and take action to approve the proposed tax rate of 30 cents per 100 evaluation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor needs to be.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, it needs to be a record vote, so what that, what that means.
It's not technically required. I'm happy to do it if you would like to document that.
Yeah, just, just in case.
All right, do you have what you need for item A? Want to go back to that for the record? All right, so on the tax rate, we, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? All right, do you want to take the roll call vote?
Yes, Courtney Cox.
Aye.
Burns Turner.
Aye.
Faith Haley. Justin Boudreau.
Aye.
Kelly Mottul.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a few more items. Future agenda items, discount, if you have a request, you can share it now. Or you can always consider them to be anytime between now and our next meeting. All right, you just let me know later. Moving on to reports, item A, mayor's reports, I have a few things. First of all, thank you, Daniel McJunkin. He came by this morning and made a request that we issue a city burn ban, or ban on burning is technically what it is. You can see it hanging on the front door. That is something that we have not done when we've had burn bans by the county since 2011. But there's nothing wrong with resurrecting that idea, so we put that into effect today. You'll see it on our website and it's posted here in City Hall. Thank you to council members. I have, I've made some comments and we've had discussions about some challenges of working together outside of meetings. And I know we've had some comments tonight about doing homework before you get here. I've had two council members come in this week and council member coming in the week prior, working on budget and asking questions. So thanks, everybody, for working with us on that. Revenue management, they were due to present today, it was just their monthly term that they would come and share results. We moved him to September. We might move him one more month and just accept the report, depending on how our next meeting in September will be adopting, have a, holding a hearing and then adopting the budget and the tax rate. Anyway, that information is coming in on time. We just delayed him so that we could have plenty of time for him to present. And those are the big things that I have on my list. Any council members have a report this month?
I have a report, but I've had a request on minutes. If we could say what people, when they stand up and give comments, what it was about. So we could look back and see what is important to our constituents.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
I think we could have two minutes.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody in staff? Y'all could see that Nate has already provided a report. It shows up in blue on this copy as an attachment. You probably saw it when you looked online for your supporting documents. Just provided us a nice report of what's going on the first week that he's been here. And with that, we will.
I like the way that he, where we could just, you know, click on the link and it opened up, I like that too.
Great. This is the very first time that we are using our brand new software to generate the minutes, the agenda and the minutes. And that's how you can see the attachments right in the agenda. So for next meeting, you'll see minutes that also come out of this system. All right, and with that, we will adjourn at 7:52.